Good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting for Bedford Township from March 16th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil, if you'd like to open us up in prayer, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Shall we bow? Father in heaven, we thank you for this day that you have given us. I'd like to thank you for all of these public servants that are here in this room that are willing to give their time, sacrifice time away from their families and to conduct the business of this township that we live in and that you have blessed us to live in. Father, I'd ask for your guidance, your strength, your wisdom, and courage on all of our elected officials here. They have tough decisions before them tonight and we would pray for your wisdom in conducting business. And we thank you for your son and we thank you for everything that you have blessed us with in this life. Pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. As you all know, things are changing rapidly by the hour, by the day. Ms. Hirschberger and I talked Friday about calling a special meeting. As you all know, I can't just call or make decisions without the board because the board is the decision maker. So we have to have sufficient hours of working time to call for a special meeting. So this is the quickest we could get it together in the timeframe. So we wanted to get together because obviously there's a lot of moving parts. We want to protect our employees and protect the public. So that is why we called it. So number two is approval of the agenda. Everybody's got an agenda. Take a look at it. Look for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Mr. Supervisor, was it your intent to have the resolution regarding bills on the agenda?
Yes.
That would make motion, we add that as item number C would be a resolution, discussion, and approval for emergency payment of bills.
Mr. Tinney.
I haven't seen any bills. I couldn't vote to approve bills if I haven't seen the bills.
It's basically the discussion that if we have to pay bills without getting together for a meeting, then it would give the right resolution, basically gives the people within the full-time people the authority to pay the bills. There's a resolution that was in place from, when was it, Trudy?
I put one in front of everyone's desk. That was one that we have in place for emergencies, utilities, payroll, invoices with penalties.
I didn't see this. Thank you.
It was just something that was discussed today with everything changing so fast. So we thought it-
As long as I see the resolution, okay.
And Nancy, because we haven't discussed it, I didn't want to make it any more specific than that. So it's more broad than specific.
Okay. You support that? You made the motion? Okay. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Ms. Tinney.
Aye.
Francis is absent. Hirschberger votes aye. Mr. Peroni.
Aye. The motion passed six zero. Item three is a public comment. Seeing none, moving on to new business. It's a protocol for Township Hall and future meetings. So I, the reason for the special meeting was to discuss keeping the employees at Township Hall safe, keeping the public safe with the recent activity that's happened with different businesses closing, restaurants, and the recommendations of crowds ten or less. I think it's in our best interest to close the building to the public. And then Thursday, we would hire a company that would come in and hydrostatic spray the building that would keep it disinfected for three weeks. Monday morning, we would return as usual with all the employees, but we would still remain closed to the public. But we'd still be able to take care of the public's needs in any way because of the drive-through that we have. We would all have to be working together with the drive-through. We would all have to be somehow, you know, utilize that. But I know through email, phone numbers, and discussions on the phone, we can do all township business through that and through the drive-through. So if somebody needed to bring a set of blueprints for something, we could always meet them at the front door and hand it. But that would stop traffic from coming in. I think all future meetings at this time, you know, outside of, you know, one thing we need to discuss is township board meetings, but all future meetings should be, you know, postponed in the building. We have a lot of meetings that are utilized in Room C almost on a weekly basis as far as, you know, different associations. So we would stop that until further notice. So that's kind of my thoughts. I'm not sure where the rest of the board is at. Like I said, to kind of reiterate, we would close effective immediately tomorrow morning to the public for two days. And then Thursday, Friday, close to the public and the employees. And then resume back Monday for the employees and will continue to serve the public. Now with the recent information that just came out from President Trump recommending people work from home, most employees here can't work from home, you know, so that's something we need to discuss. So I look for any discussion from anybody. Ms. Tinney.
So the employees would be back to work on Monday and working around, I mean, working every day as normal?
Correct.
Five to, I mean, five.
Eight to five. Correct. Couple of things. There's, you know, we do have a seasonal employee that was scheduled to work Thursday and Friday. I don't think with what's going on, anybody deserves to not be paid. We have some part-time employees that don't have time off, you know. I think they all deserve to be paid. So, you know.
Why wouldn't they be coming in?
Thursday and Friday of this week.
Oh, yeah.
If we close to get this place properly cleaned correct.
So Paul, you're saying that the employees would still work tomorrow even though it's shut to the public?
Employees are still going to work tomorrow morning, but it'll be closed to the public.
Okay. Now what about Wednesday?
Wednesday would be closed to the public.
Okay. Because you were saying they were going to bring this in Thursday, Friday, you'd shut down.
George is telling you to bring your mic a little closer. They can't hear you.
So you actually said Thursday, Friday, we'd shut down, but-
Shut down to the public and employees.
So-
Tuesday, Wednesday would be open for employees.
That's what I'm saying. Because first you said just tomorrow, then-
Okay. Tuesday and Wednesday open for business, but just close to the public. And then Thursday, Friday, we'd get a deep cleaning that would last three weeks. And then back open Monday for the employees. And like I said, we'll just have to have a meeting Monday morning to discuss how this is going to work, or actually tomorrow morning, how this is going to work. I mean, Chris, obviously you guys have the drive-through in your department, but it's really the only way, you know. We'll just have to figure it out. I don't know what that'll look like, but it's going to have to work together to be able to serve the public. Thank the Lord we have the drive-through.
Just a suggestion is you mentioned that if someone had to bring prints or something like that in the building.
We would meet them at the front door.
That's okay, but you still do have potential accidental contact or close proximity where as long as you maybe stayed behind the first set of doors, have them put it between the outer door and the interior door. That way they could set it. They leave and then-
It's a good idea.
Just a suggestion for anybody that has to go near that door.
And they're not foreseeing anything like that at the moment. There's, you know, and there is no planning of BZA meeting scheduled for next month, which is good. Ms. Hirschberger.
I have one issue. I have about 15 passports scheduled. And I have to give the federal government so much time before I can shut the passport agency down completely like that. So I would have to at least let passport customers that I already have appointments for Tuesday and Wednesday and try and get the rest of them maybe to come in those two days. So there's no way I can shut down Tuesday and Wednesday completely.
Is there any way to call those people that are all scheduled and push them out?
I can ask, but I can't make because it's federal.
What's the normal notification if you do have to close it?
They ask that if we're going to close due to illness, that shuts us down, that we let them know immediately. There's no protocol for closing down for any other reason.
But isn't that why we're closing down? Phil, what's your thought on it?
Well, I guess it depends on how you define illness, but I think the protocol is if the individual or individuals who are processing the passports fall ill and they're unable to process them, then they could shut down. So-
But they could fall ill if somebody comes in who's sick?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, I don't think it fits within that category. I suppose our clerk could call the governmental entity and find out how they wish us to proceed. But keep in mind that, well, I guess international travel is not occurring much right now. So I was just concerned about a resident who needed a passport because they were scheduled for international travel. That may be put on hold, but so I think it would be best so that we comply with the law that if Trudy were to contact the federal government and find out, if we have to process them, then we have to process them. You're restricting, should the board decide to do what's been proposed, you're restricting business as much as you possibly can and really, in essence, staying open and conducting business. The business of the township will go on because our employees will be here and will be able to do it by alternate methodology, internet, email, telephone, what have you, our drive-through window. So I think we should leave that to the discretion of our clerk in consultation with the federal government and in checking with the people who have actually applied for the passports. And if we can comply with law by postponing it temporarily, that's what we should do. I mean, I like the idea of government being able to operate in a restricted fashion. The county is doing that. I attended a meeting before I came here and the county is in fact going to do that, even the operation of the courts. Only those essential services, only those essential hearings will be held and there will be restricted access to the courthouse to try to do what they can do to prevent the infection from spreading. So that's how I think I would handle it.
I have no problem calling all of them. I think we have one though tomorrow morning at 8:30. So they're going to come. There's no way to stop them at this point. But we can call the rest of them to see if there's any way they can push it out. Passports take about six to eight weeks, so most of these people probably aren't thinking of travel till June, but they need at least a couple of months. So I will call the federal government to see what they tell me and I will call the individuals to see if they're willing to move out.
Sounds good. Any more discussion on that? Stinney.
You said the drive-through will be open if things are passed through there. Is there a protocol for, you know, getting, cleansing whatever documents come through there? I mean, you're talking about protecting the employees and if they have to pick up a document that someone had just coughed on, is there, do you have some kind of spray disinfectant to-
I mean, we could definitely get some. Mr. Steiner, you have a thought on it?
My wife works with her company and they have a pass-through. She works in Ag. And they have trucking companies come in all the time. They got a pass-through window. And I made the comment, I said, what about latex gloves? So maybe latex, the real thin latex gloves, gives you some protection. You can toss those, but some of those gloves you can also, you could wash too. So you could put them on again if you wash, but maybe some latex gloves for the initial handling of those. And then papers, I mean, I don't remember the exact amount of hours they said that the virus could stay on-
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight, you said? I know they talked about like stainless and plastics. I don't remember what they said paper. Maybe the same as cardboard. I don't know.
I didn't hear paper. They just said it can stay on the surface forty-eight hours.
Yeah, I heard some testing they did with some nebulizers and other equipment and they gave that breakdown. But yeah, something like that. And believe me, if you had a wipe that wasn't soaking wet, I'm sure you could take one of those bacteria, antibacterial wipes and go across a general piece of paper. It's not going to mess it up unless you've got a signature, just stay away from that signature.
Stinney.
I have another question about the meetings. Are you then stating that we would not have township board meetings or planning commission meetings?
I was recommending, I mean, on our agenda, there is a couple of things that we need to talk to Karen about as far as splits.
I already did.
You already did. I mean, is that something that can be pushed? Everything on our agenda can be pushed other than bills. I mean, I'm sure Trudy would send emails out to, you know, the group to look at, look at the bills over, you know, to make sure there's nothing alarming, but it would just be, we'd be able to do it in-house without having a board meeting and invite, and then the public's invited to come as well. We would stop that at least for the next couple few weeks till things, you know, slow down.
You're supposed to accelerate, not slow down.
Then we'd be ahead of the curve. I mean, as far as stopping these meetings.
Is there a problem with this setup right here? I mean, we're six feet apart. What's the reason then for stopping the meeting?
I'm just suggesting. It's just an option.
Well, we worked hard to get the planning commission to be able to accelerate things so applicants didn't have to slow down. And we're trying to keep our economy running in the country. And if you end, you know, construction and certain kinds of development that people aren't quarantined to do, I think that, I think we're doing a disservice to our community by halting it. I mean-
Well, any public, and I don't disagree with what you said Nancy, any public meeting though, because of the Open Meeting Act, has to be open to the public. We could encourage our folks in the community to stay home and watch it on TV, but we can't require them to do that. If anyone wants to attend any public meeting, we have to allow them to attend.
I agree. And the bottom line is, is everybody's struggling with this. I mean, there's restaurants closed, bars closed. It's, everybody's hurting from it. To put this whole board at risk for a split. I just think, you know, if Karen's saying, Karen probably talked to the resident or whoever that brought it in and is okay with pushing it. I don't know what, what did she do?
There are two rezonings and she said that's fine.
So I mean, it's nothing urgent, you know, and that's, you know, we're going to continue to keep open and keep moving forward. TC?
I was just going to say, if that's the case, then why don't we just postpone the 24th meeting and pause there? Although we need to take indefinite measures for, you know, weeks on end, but I think canceling that one gives us three weeks. Clearly, the country's going to have a lot more information when you think about how things have changed in the last 72 hours.
For your information, and it's certainly not binding on you, it's just informational only. And you may already know this, the county board of commissioners, at the call of the chairperson, which he's allowed to do under the bylaws of the county, cancel tomorrow night's county commissioners meeting. Just one meeting, I think, to do what TC is mentioning is to pause to see where, what information is made available to us. Sooner or later, probably sooner, we're going to have to conduct meetings to take care of certain business. And I think we would just encourage the public to view it on TV and only those people necessary to conduct that business be there. But at the same time, that's just an encouragement. That's a recommendation. That's, we can't make that a mandate because of the Open Meetings Act.
As of right now, planning commission has nothing for their 25th meeting and the BZA meeting for April has been canceled. So those two won't be meeting till, well, BZA May and TC, planning commission, probably sometime in April.
Are we pushing the budget meeting for next week? Is that just get, that would need to get rescheduled as well then, right?
I personally think we'd be okay to push one more.
That's what I mean.
But we're always a few weeks ahead of schedule as it is anyway. So I think if we could push it a little bit, it'd just be smart of us.
Push everything till April?
I mean, definitely, you know, library vice or board and stuff like that does not need to happen here. I mean, there's nothing urgent that needs to be conducted. I mean, I know they scheduled a meeting today for next week or somewhere in there. So those can all be, you know, pushed or, you know, so. So if no further discussion, I look for a motion to, Ms. Tinney.
I have a request for whoever's going to make the motion, it's going to be me, but that the supervisor, clerk, or treasurer would email business that you plan on taking care of without the board before you take care of it. I'm not saying have a meeting through email at all. I'm not asking for any vote or any, how do you feel about this? But I, I, I'm not saying I'm concerned about what might happen in Township Hall without trustees having awareness, but I think that it's important that all the board are aware of what is going to be approved or taken care of without the trustees.
If we're talking about bills?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm talking about other items of business that if you don't have a meeting, I'd just say, okay, I'll just go ahead and approve it.
No business, no business is going to be taken care of as far as stuff that should be come here. The only thing we're asking to take care of is bills.
Yeah, I was going to say, it would still require a vote and by virtue of the fact there's no meeting, there's no vote.
Yeah, there's going to be nothing, but Trudy, I'm sure we can email.
If we cancel the 24th, my concern is the bills. Everything else can wait till the next meeting.
Which we can email all those out to the trustees so they see what we're approving before we approve them.
Right.
But like my election workers, I'd like to pay them. That would be something on there. So that was my concern. Bills that need to be paid, the election inspectors I'd like to pay. Things like that I'm worried about. If we don't have this next meeting, I can't pay.
No, no, that's not my concern of mine. I thought I heard other things that may need to go through. I thought I heard that, so maybe I didn't.
No business will be done other than bills, which is what the resolution reads.
Well, this is a prior resolution. I was just showing you what can be done right now. But on top of this, I was asking, if we skip that meeting, I would like to pay some of these other bills that don't fall under this schedule.
And to that extent, an email, excuse me, to our trustees as to what the bills are would be in order, even though a vote isn't being taken, they're not being polled. But to Nancy's point, an email to our trustees.
And my idea was to put together the same packet that I would for a normal board meeting and send that out so you know which bills, you'd have the same, it would look exactly the same. And then at the next meeting, we'd have two packets of bills, what I paid prior so that we can approve those and then what new ones would be coming.
And then are we going to have a motion as to whether we pay the employees that are not salaried for Thursday and Friday?
Yeah, we'll have to have a separate motion. Yeah.
We should.
Separate from this.
Yeah.
We should. And I think that's, I'll just weigh in. It's appropriate because it's through no fault of their own and it's for taking extraordinary means to protect the population of this building.
Okay. I look for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I would suggest you make the motion since you're most aware of the hours and what you want to achieve by the motion.
I'll make the motion that as of effective immediately, we close Township Hall to the public Tuesday and Wednesday. And then we close to the public and the employees Thursday and Friday of this week. And then starting Monday of next week, we'll be closed to the public, but open to the employees to conduct business as usual. That's my motion.
Until when?
Until further notice.
Are you going to put a separate motion for the bills or in this?
I'll do a, I'll do a separate motion.
And maybe make part of your motion, the closure on Thursday and Friday, just so it's part of the record, is for disinfection of the building for the public health, safety, and welfare.
What Phil said.
Can we put a little thing in there for my passports? Do we need something that if I have to bring them in, I can?
Yes, and that's-
Should we put that with the bills?
Let's make a separate motion. We'll pass on this. We'll do a separate motion for that.
For the passports?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll support.
Okay, motion is supportive and-
Could you, can I have a friendly amendment?
Mr. Clemmons.
Would you put in the dates rather than Thursday and Friday of this week and Monday of next week?
Okay, so 17, 18?
Starting 17 and 18 of March, close to the public. 19 and 20, close to the public and employees. Starting back up the 23rd, open back up to the employees, close to the public until further notice.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Clemmons, discussion. Seeing none, look, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Peroni?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Ms. Tinney?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye.
And the motion passed six zero.
With respect to, I'm sorry, I jumped down there. With respect to Trudy's request regarding passports, I would, I'd recommend that we have a separate motion that would vest her with complete authority to communicate with the federal government, those individuals who have applied for passports and in her discretion to either not meet or meet with them as may be necessary based upon the information that she receives from the federal government.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Supportive and Ms. Tinney, discussion. I think, like I said, ultimately, everybody has the best interest of the public and the employees at heart and we want to, you know, make sure we wrap things up appropriately. So I think it's a good idea. Mr. Clemmons? Nothing? Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Peroni?
Aye.
Ms. Tinney?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye.
The motion passed six zero. My next motion would be I make a motion that we pay the employees seasonal or part-time that don't get the proper benefits that the full-time employees get for this week, Thursday and Friday.
I'll support.
Okay, motion is supportive and Mr. Clemmons, discussion.
Can I hear the motion again?
The motion was to pay the employees that are either seasonal or part-time that don't receive the full-time benefits for this Thursday and Friday only, which would be 19th and 20th.
If they were already scheduled?
If they were already scheduled, which they all are. I know in Treasure's department, there was one scheduled.
Planning has one, but only for one day.
Planning has one for one day, so we'll work it out.
Okay.
Maybe make it clear in the motion for future, if anyone looked at it, that it was because of the closure of the entire building.
I guess, and I'll accept that, I guess what happens in two weeks if we get a seasonal employee that's homesick and forced to stay home for two weeks, you know, that's another situation that could arise. Same thing in planning. We have a seasonal employee, you know, that they're told to stay home, you know.
Who tells them?
The doctor. I mean, we have an employee home right now because the doctor told him to stay home for two weeks.
What are you implying?
I'm just asking, what's the board's-
They should get paid?
I think so, personally. I think, I don't think it's, you know- I think so, personally, I think, I don't think it's, you know, it's not their fault they're being told to stay home. I mean, I, I guess it's up for discussion, but I mean, it's just a situation we could run into.
Do they have sick time available right now?
No, seasonal or part-time have sick time, I'm talking seasonal. Any, any s, full-time, which is a salary employee, is gonna be taken care of.
Do we have reason to believe that their sickness was a result of here or any way to know, or it's just a total unknown?
Well, that's my point, I mean, an, a seasonal employee knows when they're hired and a part-time that they don't get benefits. They don't get, they don't get paid for being sick. So, I mean, that seems to open the door, and I'm not saying that anybody would do this, but it seems to open the door to just saying you're sick and getting paid for it. I don't, I don't agree with that. I agree with Thursday and Friday, but.
They're gonna have to have a doctor's note, I mean, it's just same thing with full-time employees right now. Somebody could say, hey, I'm, I'm sick and stay home for two weeks, we're gonna have to have a doctor's note. You know, if, I guess if we got a doctor's note from one of the seasonal employees that said, hey, you're required to stay home for two weeks, or a part-time employee, hey, you're required to stay home for two weeks because you could have this to protect the employees, that's not technically really their fault. And to me, our part-time employees are, you know, I'm just saying, it's a, it's an extenuating circumstance, you know, so.
But this motion does not apply to that, correct?
No, but I was just saying, it's something we need to think about if we wanna make a separate motion. So if we, uh, any more discussion on the motion I made? Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Peroni?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Tinnevery?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye.
And the motion passed six, zero, do we wanna have any more discussion on, um, part-time or seasonal employees?
Uh, not to your point, Mr. Supervisor, but in your original motion, I don't think we resolved what we're doing on the March 24th meeting. So we would need to address that, or are you just going to, we just gonna determine to cancel that meeting, or does it require a motion?
Board's gotta take.
We've advertised it as a.
Has to take action to, but, um, I, I think that we should.
It, it requires a motion because we don't have a bylaw that would provide any one individual with the authority to do that.
So it was omitted from your first motion, if it's okay, I'll make a motion that the board cancel the March 24th meeting based on current health conditions and that we presume with our normal board schedule in April.
Second.
Okay, motion in support of it, Mr. Steiner, discussion.
Mr. Peroni? Just a quick friendly amendment, um, Mr. Clemmons, you said resume April 7th would be the first meeting. Maybe add prohibiting any further directives from our federal government. I mean, we don't know what, what's gonna be like. So they, they may turn around and tell us that everybody's locked down.
That's fine, but if they tell us everybody's locked down, it doesn't matter what our motion said or didn't say.
Right.
But, but I accept it, that's fine.
Yeah.
It doesn't change.
So somebody doesn't expect us that you're gonna come and?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion in support, question, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Ms. Tinnevery?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye, Mr. Peroni?
Aye, and the motion passed six to zero. Okay, the next on the list is 4B electrostatic, electrostatic disinfected spray. You have the quote in front of you and you have a recommendation, I guess letter from, on the backside of it, from, from Christ the King School and Church, who has used them and has been satisfied. But basically, this is a spray that can disinfect the building for three weeks. Keeps the surfaces clean for three weeks. I would, I thought it'd be a good idea with the amount of people that have been in and out of here for the last two weeks, that we could get the building cleaned and start fresh on Monday and, and utilize some of the options Mr. Steiner talked about with wipes and gloves and whatnot, so. Don't know a ton about the company, Ms. Tinnevery?
Is this the only company that does this kind of work?
Probably not, but it was the only company, cause we're dealing with, uh, looking to put quotes out to get bids from different companies for like electrical plumbing and heating and air, and this is one of those companies that can perform all those jobs, so, um, they actually do the spraying and we looked into it and.
How did you find them?
How did we find them, Al? Did you look into them or something? He just came into the office about their cleaning services. So we had a meeting with them. We got a reference letter.
Podium.
So that's all, I, I mean, it's pretty much it, we just came in to talk about his services and it happened we had all these other things. He didn't even need to come up, I just quoted him for being.
No, it's fantastic, he didn't have a microphone, but it was fun to listen to from our perspective.
Like an interpreter.
Yeah. Trying to save him time for getting up, you know. But like I said, we did look into them and talked to a, a place that does use them. I'm sure there's other companies that do it, but. Ms. Tinnevery?
So, um, you're asking for both the Township Hall and the?
I would say no on the library at this point. I would say we do it for the Township Hall, since people are going to be in it every day still. I think for the library, they're closed till when March, when, when are they closed till?
I don't remember the specific closed.
Including employees and everybody?
Yeah, I think they're closed for the next few weeks at least. Is it a month?
So I figured. Kill any virus that's there.
So I figured a week before, maybe, we could hire the company a week before the library's about to open and back up and then that would kill everything and keep it clean for a few weeks. Ms. Tinnevery?
Well, the virus is only supposed to stay 48 hours. It's gonna be closed a month, who's gonna be in there?
There's employees gonna be in there for, uh, contractors gonna be doing the, um, different work for the controls.
The HVAC controls.
HVAC controls, there'll be employees in there, I mean, be very few, probably under five, but there'll be workers in there.
When, though, I mean?
Starting tomorrow morning at seven.
How long will that take?
Uh, week and a half. So I guess when they're done, they'll probably be, be good anyway, yes, we won't really need to do the library.
I mean, unless someone, you know, for some reason, the librarian or somebody has to be in there. I mean, I do wanna protect the librarian, the employees and anyone that might use it as well, but in light of the fact that they're gonna be closed, I just didn't think we needed to be.
And it was mainly for the Township Hall right now, to get it done Thursday, that's all we scheduled it for, so. The library was just in case, you know, we, whatever, we could pull the trigger if we had to, but I don't, I agree with you, I don't think we need, even need to worry about the library. So I look for a motion to approve, to get this place disinfected.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion to approve Corp. Clean to come in and disinfect, spray the Bedford Township Building as a result of our current health crisis, authorizing you to approve a contract not to exceed the amount of $1,225.
Second.
Okay, motion supportive and Ms. Tinnevery, discussion. What? Okay, seeing none, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Ms. Tinnevery?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye, Mr. Peroni?
Aye, and the motion passed six to zero. Okay, uh, next is comments from the public?
Nope, nope, your bills.
Pauling.
Okay, let's, we gotta approve, uh.
Resolution.
The resolution, uh, to be able to pay the bills at the discretion of the.
Well, this isn't the resolution, this shows what we currently have in place.
What we currently have in file.
We just need approval to pay, we don't need a resolution, we just need approval to pay.
Yes, so it should be a motion, uh, giving our clerk authority to pay bills in the normal course of business until, until further Township Board meetings.
Yeah, and I mean, I would continue to sign them as well, so I mean, and I, I would just add to it, that the, um, bills be sent to the trustees before they're paid. And if anybody rises a concern, they could call or let us know.
I, I do, I do like the, um, the four stipulations there in light of the fact that if we have to, um, eliminate our April meeting, that these are the, you know, their emergency, that actually it's kind of already a law that, not payroll, but all bills, utility bills and things like that have to be paid whether you can meet or not. IDA only meets once a month and they have this kind of a thing, so, um, anyway, I do like the four stipulations, but if you just prefer that they're paid, the problem is if we don't get back on the 7th, then what?
Yeah, I like Nancy's idea as well. I think that we, we canonize it in those four stipulations because it does protect in the event of unforeseen circumstances. Do you want that in a motion?
Does that, does that restrict, um, the clerk from paying bills in the normal course of business? That's the way I would interpret that.
That's how I interpreted too.
Well, like what, like what are you saying, that's what I?
Well, like you have regular vendors that submit bills on a regular basis that you would normally approve at each Township Board meeting, uh, which wouldn't, I don't think would be covered by.
Would they incur a penalty if they're not paid on time?
Some no.
Yeah, some, I mean, some no, um, you have, um, you know, many vendors that, that would, just wouldn't get paid, which would, I think, be, and whether it incurred a penalty or not, I think would be unfair because.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so then can we stipulate regular vendors? Because like, this, this, we made a motion to pay it, but, um, if somebody comes in and wants to do a deal and that's what I, that was what I was saying, I thought we should know before you're, okay.
That's why I would, I would send all of them to the trustees a couple days before I actually cut the check, so if there is an issue, you can get back with me right away saying, I have an issue, please don't cut this check to this one.
Okay, I'm good.
I'm fine with all bills.
Yeah, uh, I'm just being too, looking into it too deeply, like the whole various things, so.
No, it's, just bills to be paid in the normal course of, or ordinary course of business, so I don't think anybody would, think that they would be, like you said, that they would have the authority to pay a bill on something new that hasn't been provided authority by the full board.
It's gonna be current vendors anyway.
Current vendors.
So we could even state that part of our current.
Yeah, the only thing different would be the election workers, otherwise it's just normal things that we have paid this whole time.
Yeah, and, and they should be paid.
Should fall under payroll, yeah.
But they don't go under payroll, so, cause they're individual vendors, so.
Contracted.
True.
Right.
1099s?
Yeah.
Or we could even stipulate that, if you're looking at these, they payroll plus 1099. If that's where you wanna do it.
I just wanna be able to pay bills, that's all.
Ms. Hirschberger, in the same light that I asked Supervisor Peroni, do you wanna make the motion so that it accommodates what you need out of your office?
Tell you what, I'll make the motion that we approve our clerk to pay the bills of the township under normal business, which includes payroll, utility bills, invoices, general invoices from current vendors of anything in process, any emergency expenditures as was pre-approved, uh, back in 2004 by a previous board. Also to pay the clerk's election workers from this last election cycle, at least for this particular cycle up to potentially having a board meeting on April 7th. If for some reason that meeting has to be canceled due to the current health issues, then the clerk would be authorized to proceed for one more, uh, cycle until the next Township Board meeting can be convened.
I'll support. Motion supportive of Mr. Clemmons, discussion. Seeing none, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Ms. Tinnevery?
Aye.
Hirschberger votes aye, Mr. Peroni?
Aye, the motion passed six, zero. Is there any other business that we discussed? I mean, the one thing we did discuss that we didn't come to a resolution was if employees, like I said, that are part-time or seasonal get forced to stay home from a doctor next week, there's nothing in place as of right now to pay them. So. I just don't wanna see it happen and then, you know, potentially, I mean, you know, we've got an employee in there that's been in the clerk's department for, you know, six, eight months now and, you know, I would just hate for something to happen, you know, they're told to stay home for two weeks and they, you know, I guess they can collect unemployment, what do you think, what's your thoughts, Phil?
Well, they may or may not be eligible, here's the other side of the coin, just food for thought, for, for the board members to think about. If somebody is sick and they go to the doctor and the doctor orders them not to go to work, we're not gonna know about that. And if their economic situation is such that they disregard the directive from their doctor because they can't afford not to come to work to get paid, then they're potentially infecting other people at the Township Hall. That's the other side of the coin that you have to think about. I'm not advocating paying people for not doing work or not showing up and there's always those situations where somebody might get the bright idea, I'm not coming to work, I'm sick and you have to pay me. That may be unavoidable, we hope we don't have employees like that either full, full-time, part-time or seasonal, but that's the other side of the coin that you think about, I guess. Just food for thought, it's not, I'm not saying do it or not, not do it, it's just food for thought.
Personally, I think we should have something in place to take care of our employees, it's for, what are you talking, maybe the next month? And we have one, uh, one, two, three seasonal and, uh, basically two part-times. It's not like we have 50, 60 employees, you know, every single one of them are dedicated, you know, people that I trust and could not see pulling anything like, you know, we're thinking could happen. I'm just, you know, I think the circumstances is different and I think our employees should be taken care of. If something happens, it's out of their control. So. I'll make a motion, we put in place if, uh, a seasonal or a part-time employee becomes sick and are quarantined to stay at home for up to a week, that this Township Board takes care of them without their, um, without the benefits being in place that we pay them.
I'll support with a friendly amendment that we would pay them based on their average rate or their standard rate in hours.
Okay.
And if they were only for the days they were scheduled?
Correct.
Correct. If it's two days, you know.
Right, I just wanna be clear that we're not paying for 14 days worth of quarantine, but we're paying for what would have been their normal work schedule.
Mr. Steiner?
I, I mean, I hate to say it, but do we need a not-to-exceed date? I would. Cause, you know.
I thi, I think you should, and also to the extent that we don't violate HIPAA, there should be documentation from a licensed and accredited physician stating that they have been instructed to stay home, they're under quarantine, need to put that in there, I think.
Okay, I'll, I'll add that into my motion.
And Rick's point is well taken too, not to, not to go beyond a certain date, not, so that it's not blanket for now until eternity.
So what do you wanna stipulate, do you wanna use it the same as we did the board meeting? To use April 7th contingent upon the government causing us to have to skip again and so on until the next board meeting?
We could do that.
So it will be suspended the next time this board meets in regular session? Wouldn't that be acceptable language?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And you're gonna accept the?
I accept both friendly amendments from Phil.
Okay.
And, Mr. Steiner? Need more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Peroni?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Ms. Tinnevery?
No, and I'd like the minister to reflect that it's because the circumstances are far too ambiguous.
Hirschberger votes aye.
Okay, the motion passed five to one. Okay. Comments from the public? Seeing none, comments from board members, Mr. Clemmons?
Nothing.
Ms. Tinnevery?
I, I'd just like to ask Trudy, what was the, um, what was the circumstance that precipitated this? The, um, resolution in 2004? I know you weren't the clerk, but you were the deputy. I know you weren't the clerk, but you were the deputy clerk. Do you have any idea?
I would have to go back in the minutes and see exactly. I don't remember off the top of my head in 2004, but it seems like some bills were getting paid late. So then it was brought up that the meeting, sometimes the bills, there were too much time, especially if we went three weeks in between or something. So then they thought, maybe we need something to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't, I don't remember verbatim, but I know it was something to that extent.
Yeah, I think the township, um, found itself in a situation that it was being charged, uh, penalty for, um, not timely payment by certain, some vendors. So I think it was done to prohibit that, if I remember correctly.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Steiner?
Nothing.
Mr. Montre?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Hirschberger?
Nothing.
And I just would like to say, I appreciate everybody's patience. Um, and like I said, we'll be continuing to do business as usual, um, to, you know, do everything we can do to keep things moving forward. Uh, be patient, like I said earlier, um, help out a neighbor, um, you know, and, uh, we appreciate it, so we stand adjourned.